Conference will now be recorded.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Walchuk.
You.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved. Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as printed by Mayor Proton, seconded by Councilwoman Collins. Any discussion? Hannah.
Councilmember Hollinshead. Hi, Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchuk.
Aye.
Motion great.
Thank you. I just left it. Are there any modifications to the agenda this evening?
Yeah.
Approval of the minutes of regular session of October 6th, 2025. Any changes, additions? No, table standard is printed. We're down to public comment. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. And online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. And all comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. Anyone?
Angie Skiba, 635 River Street. I know that the Boys, Old Boys and Girls Club is up for sale. And I would like to preemptively say I do not want another shelter in our neighborhood. We now have three, we're on overload. The neighbors are very upset about it, the fact that we already have three. And I'd like to know if there's any certain steps we have to start to stop that process because there's already people pushing that agenda. And we don't want it. So if there's any direction you have for me, go through other meetings or whatever, I will be happy to follow through.
Angie, I'm just going to direct you to either contact Rachel or Montiel.
Okay.
Can tell you the, um, our zoning and what is allowed, isn't allowed.
Okay.
Or could.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Anyone else? Come on up, Paige.
Don't hide.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Paige Fisher. I am the new president CEO of the chamber and I wanted to introduce myself.
It's very nice to see you, of course, I've met you before, but congratulations on your new job. And we look forward to all the wonderful things you're going to do. So if there's anything you want to tell us, just have them.
Not at this moment, but it's lovely to see you.
Thank you for coming.
Kevin didn't tell her that she was speaking.
We should have told her. Thank you, Paige. Anyone else? So I'm going to close public comment. We have no public hearing, so I'm down to seven consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,307,945.89 unauthorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. B, approval of a cemetery deed number 0334 by and between the City of Alpena and Ray Blow. In the amount, no, in the sum of $755 to block 40, lot 151, for the use and purpose of a burial lot with perpetual care. And authorized Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign said deed. C, approve the Colligan Plaza reconstruction project change order in the amount of $17,695.31 unauthorized Mayor Johnson to sign. D, authorize the closure of the Economic Development Corporation bank account held with PNC and transfer the funds to the City of Alpena's general fund. Held with Nicolay Bank. E, mail reappointment of Randy Ball Bolts to the planning commission for a three-year term to expire on November 1st, 2020. And F, grant my bros to the zoning board of abuse for a three-year term to expire on October 20th, 2020. That we accept the consent agenda as presented.
For.
Mayor Proton, Mayor Maltzen to accept the consent agenda as printed, supported by Danny. Any discussion? Hannah.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchuk.
Aye.
And Councilmember Hollinshead. Motion great.
We are down to presentations and we have employee of the quarter. Kathy Hines is not here, but I believe that Rachel.
Yes.
Here, okay, great. So each quarter, we take the opportunity to recognize an individual whose contributions truly stand out. Someone who exemplifies professionalism, dedication and respect. This recognition celebrates their outstanding achievements and steady commitment to the city's mission and values. Do you ever drive by city hall after hours and see that there are lights still on? It's probably Leland because she's usually here even longer than I am some days, well, most days actually. So this quarter's employee of the quarter is no mystery to staff. Deputy Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director, Leland Bruning. Since joining the city in May 2000, Leland has worn many hats and excelled in every role she's taken on. In her current position, she continues to set the bar high through her dedication, professionalism and quiet leadership. A heartfelt thank you to Leland for your outstanding commitment to your coworkers, department heads and citizens of Alpena. We are truly fortunate to have you as part of our team. Now I have Clerk, Treasurer, Finance Director, Anna Soick, who would like to share a few additional comments about Leland.
Please.
You can't. Never stay back.
I am pleased to have nominated Leland for employee of the quarter. Leland consistently demonstrates an exceptional attitude and a strong dedication to her work. Many evenings and weekends, she can be found at city hall, working to complete the accounting for the city. She approaches each task with professionalism, thoroughness and positivity, creating a welcoming and productive atmosphere for coworkers and the public. In terms of her work performance, Leland goes above and beyond expectations. She is reliable, detail oriented and proactive in addressing challenges, ensuring that projects and responsibilities are handled efficiently and with accuracy. Her dedication to the success of the clerk treasurer department is evident in her willingness to take initiative and assist coworkers whenever needed, despite knowing full well that it's going to cause her to stay late to finish up her other duties. Overall, Leland exemplifies the qualities that the city values most in its employees, teamwork, professionalism and commitment to excellence. Her positive attitude and consistent contributions make Leland deserving of recognition as employee of the quarter for the city of Alpena. She probably really should have gotten this award years ago because Leland, ever since I started working with her eight years ago, she is always giving it everything that she has. And she is so dedicated and loyal to the city that we would be at a loss without her.
It's my turn. It comes from all side. So the city of Alpena sincerely thanks you for your hard work, your dedication and your consistent willingness to go above and beyond. Because your attitude is part of what makes you so successful. From your tireless efforts during election, taxes and working with other groups, you consistently show your commitment to our community. Your positive attitude, strong work ethic and teamwork make Alpena an even better place to live in. We're an inspiration to council, our department heads and the entire team of the city of Alpena. Congratulations on your success and all you set up to achieve.
You feel a little more centered up.
Does work?
I won't talk. Thank you. Thank you, Leland.
Congratulations, Leland.
So we are down to announcements and I'd like to remind everyone that trick or treat hours in the city of Alpena will be on Friday, October 31st from 5:30 to 7:30. We're down to report of officers. So first reading, reading of ordinance 25-513, which amounts to city of Alpena zoning map. And I'm going to turn this over to Bill Feigler.
Good evening, members of council. This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-513. The city of Alpena zoning ordinance zoning map is hereby amended as follows. Parcel located at 168 East Huber Street shall be conditionally rezoned from B-1 to R-T to allow for the legal use of the property as duplex. The statement of conditions are as follows, it must be used as a duplex. There were three agreed upon conditions that were placed on the property. One, that a building permit be pulled within seven days of approval. Two, that major repairs are completed in 30 days after the permit is issued. Three, that minor repairs be completed and that units are fully certified with the rental registration program within 60 days after the permit issuance. Timelines may be adjusted for reasonable cause by city staff. Section two is a severability clause, section three is a savings clause, section four is the effective date. States as follows, the order is changed, it shall take effect by the expiration of seven days after publication with notice of adoption. Montiel is here, so if there's any specific questions about this property, she'd be able to answer that.
Does anyone have questions with Montiel? Hannah, did you have any question?
Yeah.
Okay, I have no question. No concern.
That we approve ordinance 25, is this?
This is the first.
It's the first reading? Okay, so ignore that.
We refer to it comes back one more time, one more.
Thank you.
It was me that fell asleep. So B, we have proposed changes to the zoning ordinance in a commercial rooming house. And once again, I'm going to turn that over to Mr.
There is a memo in the packet that I'm assuming each of the members have received. But this is the proposed plan to change the zoning ordinance. It was recently considered by the planning commission and adopted by them. So I'm to counsel now for potential approval. However, my understanding is at the time of the planning commission meeting, although there were discussions about terms and conditions of the proposed ordinance, there had not been any specific consideration of the Michigan housing law. So Montiel asked me to look at this, provided me the housing law itself. I went through it and the proposed ordinance and the memo lays out that there are a couple of things that I think would not pass legal muster. First one is based on familial status. I don't think that under the proposed use study can be limited to only those individuals age 18 or older. Not only does federal law protect parents with children, but the Michigan Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act would also not allow us to pass something that has any effect on familiar status. So that's one issue. The second issue is you can have a dwelling in Michigan, a private dwelling that allows folks to use a kitchen that's there. However, it's limited to basically a two-family or a three-family dwelling. The proposed ordinance would allow what's commonly referred to as a commercial rooming house. And it would allow folks to have multiple rooms in the same facility and allow those folks to have, all have access to the kitchen. And the housing law does not allow you to do that. I have definitions in there of class A and class B, multiple dwellings. And they both would put restrictions on the use as proposed by this ordinance. So you can have a rooming house, so you can rent to unrelated people and provide them a room. You just can't provide them access to the kitchen. You could prepare meals for them. So the traditional boarding house where, you know, where it's owner occupied and that particular person provides meals to the guests, that can happen. But the proposed use under this ordinance would not, would not be that required. So we wanted to bring this to you prior to asking you for formal approval of it as an ordinance for a couple of different reasons. One is just to put you on notice that this is going to come before you unless you take some action tonight on this. And second, if there is support for trying to do something like this in the city, there are a couple of different ways that it can be done. It just can't be done under the current proposed ordinance. If there isn't support amongst council to do this, then it wouldn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense referring back to planning commission. If whatever they do when it comes back in front of you is not likely to pass anyways. So Montiel is here as well. And once again, she was at the planning commission meeting, I wasn't there. So if there's any specific questions about what the thought process was there, she'd probably be better able to answer those than I, than I would. So this is just for your consideration, questions and basically to give staff direction as to what you want us to do.
Does anyone have any questions for Montiel?
Montiel, I have a question for you. It's my understanding after listening to the meeting that the planning commission was unaware of what we have now in this memo. That this is not legal and we have correct. So they might have voted differently had they known. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Comments?
Comment? I'm not in support of it.
And I'll echo what Danny said. I have, I am not in support of what has been proposed in any fashion. So I wouldn't personally send this back to planning commission because it would be a waste of our time.
I echo the same statement.
Should we make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, at this point, if the board feels like sending it back to the planning commission would not, whatever changes they would make would not be supported anyways. And I think you could vote now, I don't have a proposed motion, I could make a proposed motion. That one of you could adopt if you wanted to do so, or one of you could make your own motion. That basically just says that my commission passed this, that you don't believe it's legal. And even not in, you know, ruling, so to speak, that from a court that says it's not legal, that there's not support amongst the members to pass something like this anyways. So sending it back to planning commission would be futile.
I would move that the council wrote not to support this proposal and not to send it back to planning commission.
Second. Bill, is that sufficient?
It is.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Mitchell to vote no and not support this proposal or send it back to planning commission and support by Mayor Proton. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Any discussion? Hannah.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Walchuk.
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead. Hi. And Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Great.
Mr. Point of certification. Bill, is there anything we need to do at the planning commission?
Just basically notify them that, and if you want me to come there and go through the memo with them, I could do that. But yeah, just notify them that the action they took, we all believe would pass legal muster. And then on top of that, there was not support amongst council for them to reconsider it and try to modify it anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are down to C, economic development agreement with the Gardens of Alpena LLC. And we have city manager Rachel Small.
We do have Mac McFellin online if we have any questions related to the CIA or otherwise. Okay, so, and we also have our developers there today. Thank you. The city council created the US 23 North Corridor Improvement Authority, or CIA, set the development area and appointed the authority board members as of February 3rd, 2025, in compliance with the requirements of the Act 57 of 2018. The authority will support the, the development of the Gardens of Alpena, a senior living center that includes independent living units and assisted living and memory care units with an estimated investment of over 47 million by capturing certain future taxes generated by the additional investment and reimbursing certain development costs. The final step in this process is to approve our economic development agreement among the CIA, the City of Alpena and the Gardens of Alpena LLC. It's hashed agreement was approved by the CIA board on Tuesday, October 14th. The developer is here tonight to answer any questions and I think, given the opportunity to provide an update on the project. So I have this agreement. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to respond.
Does anyone?
Oh, good.
And we had a discussion earlier today, what I would like to see added to it. And then Mike has come up with language that we can add and developers are in agreement with adding this language. I just think it's good to do. So. See.
I can, I can read it. I'm having trouble seeing it because it's very small as well, but. So to modify, the suggestion was to modify section two.
Yep.
And that is on page five in section 2.1, development of the project. So under project scope, we would modify number one to read, deliver satisfactory proof of financing. In parentheses, a commitment letter from the construction lender and commence tree clearing on the, so it would just be added to the beginning of that just to make sure that we have proof documentation of the financing. So everyone's a little more comfortable with moving forward with the first steps of the development, which would be tree clearing.
Does everyone understand that?
Um, I have a question about that. What, why would, will it go here? Why? Is this because of sequence? This is what happens first and this is, is that okay?
Basically.
It was, it was just the most appropriate place in the agreement that I could put it was under project scope because that's where all the timelines are too.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So does anyone have any questions, concerns, anything to add? So if everyone's good with that, I'll entertain a motion to add that verbiage. Or do you want me to add it? Let me.
I mean, I can read it again if you like.
So I will make a motion under project scope. Section two, mutual understanding under number one, to add the verbiage, deliver satisfactory proof of financing, a commitment letter from the construction lender and none of the rest of the sentence before tree. And nonsense. Okay.
To approve, was that to approve the economic development agreement with those changes?
Second, by Mayor Proton, any discussion? Hannah.
Mayor Proton Walchuk.
Aye.
Councilmember Hollinshead. Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Thank you.
I would invite Bob, anyone up here to provide any updates or say anything that you would like about the, about the project. Qualify that.
The chances of city.
We'd love to hear about your family, but the project.
I can talk about family. First of all, we appreciate the change in the document and we agree it'll help us a bit. And we do have tonight, just, we have architect John Marusich with us, Steve Williamson. He's our operator and on the line we have Jim Boris, who is our financing partner. And Jim, do you want us to send, say something real quick?
Oh, he dropped off.
That's what. He didn't like it. No, we, we have diligently trying to finalize the, both the equity and the financing. And we've been close two or three times, but now we're down to one that we think is very serious. Although we do have a couple as a backup in case the one we're working with right now doesn't have. This is obviously taking longer than everybody anticipates, but it is going ahead. We're all committed 100% and we're here to open ourselves to you, anything you want from us. Okay, and I think that's the most important thing. There's a good working relationship back and forth.
We appreciate your movement on this project and can't wait till, you know, we get started and, and get done, but thank you.
All right, and we do want to also put accolade to Mike for all the key stuff.
Yeah. We agree.
Thank you, Mike.
Don't give him the big hat.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. So now we're down to D, council committee report.
The vote on it?
Oh, we did vote on it.
Yeah, I voted on your ad addition. You didn't vote on this.
So I, I had mentioned to approve the agreement with the.
See, my hearing needs are turned down.
Part of the original motion, so I just wanted to make sure it was added. Yes.
I see.
Yeah, thanks for keeping an eye on me.
Yeah.
For sure.
My.
Hannah.
I'll, I'll do this motion plus the addition or addition.
Okay. Thank you. So Danny, would you like to start committee reports this time?
Start? Well, I wasn't at the last one, but we, I think had a very good time at the annual NIMCOG. Our mayor Protem spoke eloquently, although I was prepared to, even though I'm not accustomed to public speaking, I was ready for the possibility just in case, plus I know the guys quite well. It was a very good turnout there. I think a lot of people who had not been to NIMCOG meetings before learned of fareabouts like this. And a lot of what can be offered by NIMCOG to all the area governments, especially concerning Denise Klein and our zoning ordinances, our master plans, rec plans, all these kind of good things. So it's always encouraging more communities to get involved in it, to be part of the program because it's helping them, it's helping their constituents in the communities as a whole. So that was a big one.
And it was nice to have them there.
It was very nice to have, especially for JJ's like this. I think we really showed what Alpena is, has to offer. So that was good.
Anything else?
No.
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing to report.
Moving on, there's the foot, okay. Got to get everybody on. So we're down to new business, Alpena Marina restrictive covenant. Kevin Fisher. Your turn.
I'll go up here, Kevin.
Got a half hour to get home.
Half hour? For what?
Just to get home.
2008, 2009, the Alpena Marina underwent robust environmental remediation work because of compromised underground storage tanks. That work removed hundreds of yards of contaminated soil from the described properties. In 2017, a state funded expanded triage took place that also included evaluation of soil and groundwater contamination risks by an environmental consultant. As a condition of the remediation. As a condition of the remediation work done in 2008, 2009, the City of Alpena entered into a restricted covenant regarding the property that limits the present, present and future uses of the affected area and describes specific protocols for any possible future improvements or expansions. Environment and Espejo Services Incorporated, the company who did the work back then and recently, performed further monitoring and investigations at the Alpena Marina in 2024 and summer of 2025, the results of which show a small amount of remaining pollution in one area of the Alpena Marina. In order to close out this project that began in 1994, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy is requesting the City of Alpena to enter into a new restrictive covenant for the affected property at the Alpena Marina. The 2025 restrictive covenant differs from the draft restrictive covenant only in form. Recommended motion is to approve the Declaration of Restrictive Covenant for a Restrictive Residential Corrective Action as presented, and authorize Manager Smolinski to sign the document and any associated documentation to finalize the closure of the Alpena Marina leaking underground storage tank site. I will happily try to answer any sort of questions you may have regarding all of this.
And when will they test again?
Um, ongoing monitoring will probably be every two to three years.
That was my little question.
My question was, any fuel that's down there, could it not be sucked up?
Not without removing everything that's on top of it, which would mean sod, sidewalk, asphalt, six inches of cement, and all of the utilities that are still in that area, so water and electrical. Then we actually, it would, we'd have to go down to groundwater level, which is about four and a half to six feet below the surface.
None of this is going down to the groundwater level?
It's decided that it's staying right there, just above it. As long as we promise not to disturb the site without doing more of the proper environmental excavation and remediation work, then all we're really responsible for doing is continued monitoring and making sure it doesn't get anywhere else.
Eagle is happy.
Yes.
Okay.
And muster, and Laura, and the DNR.
Anyone else have questions for Kevin? No? I did for a second, but I. Good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the Declaration of Restrictive Covenant for a Restricted Residential Corrective Action as presented, and authorize Manager Smolinski to sign the document and any associated documentation to finalize the closure of the Alpena Marina leaking underground storage tank site.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Hollins Head, second by Councilman Mitchell, to approve the Declaration of Restrictive Covenant for a Restrictive Residential Corrective Action Plan as presented and authorized by Manager Smolinski, and authorize Manager Smolinski to sign the document and any associate documentation to finalize the closure of the Alpena Marina leaking underground storage tank site. Any discussion? Anna?
House Member Hollins?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
House Member Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Walchek?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks very much.
Was, that was less painful than what you did to your wife.
I understand, I'm still wrong. However, we have talked about this multiple times over the past.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Both we adjourn.
Second. Girl, all right.
Danny has.